All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to move on to our committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 15, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
If you'd please call roll.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman McConnell.
Here.
Alderman Youngworth.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Oatman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Yeah.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
We're going to move on to committee business tonight. We're going to just do a brief budget overview. Hannah Brauch is going to give us the update and overview as we transition with our new spectacular finance director.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we begin our discussion on the long-term financial plan. Sorry, I'm a little short. This is a budget document that helps set the vision and the strategy for the city. So as part of the capital improvement plan, we're providing a blueprint of the city's overall capital investment needs and provides a set of recommendations to aid decision-making and approval on capital purchases. Before I move on, I did want to mention you guys should all have at your workstations a copy of the PowerPoint just for reference. So back to the capital plan, it's a five-year outlook for anticipated capital projects that we review and update annually with the city council. It provides a list and outlines the major capital improvements that the city is considering, and it outlines the funding of the future capital projects. Where are we so far? Departments have prepared their capital requests for council review for 2026, and then they've also projected their capital needs for 2027 through 2030.
Bottom left. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry about that. As part of what went out with the agenda, there was a summary of the capital plans for 2026 through 2030. Those ones are just kind of a brief summary, but now I'm going to kind of walk through the worksheets that are available for you guys to download. So there's going to be two worksheets. We've got one for the city proposed capital for 2026 and the projections for 2027 through 2030, and then the same sort of worksheet, but just for the utility projects. And both of these worksheets include the fleet requests, you know, the vehicles and the equipment. So I'm going to walk you through how you can download the worksheets and save them to your computer that you can use to start reviewing. So it's going to be on the city website. If you go to Departments, Finance, Budget and Financial Information, and then there's a section on that page for 2026 through 2030 Capital Plan. And then each worksheet, there's going to be a summary sheet at the beginning, and then on that summary sheet, it's going to have a page number for like a tab that you can go to, what department is requesting it, a description on the cost of each request, and then it'll be broken down by the year as well as the funding source. So this, why you guys have it in your packet, is a little screenshot that it shows you where to go. I'm going to walk you through that now. So I've got the city's website up. If you go to Departments and then Finance, and then off to the side on the left, there's a Budget and Financial Information. And then it's kind of the first section. There's one that's 2026 through 2030 Capital. These are those two worksheets that I talked about that you guys will want to download. I'm going to walk you through one. So if you click on it, if you notice, it started to kick out its downloading. It takes a little bit. The city one's pretty large, not to scare you. So it popped up here. You might have to click on the down arrow, and it'll show recent download history. So from here, this is where, and you might have to click this Enable Editing, but you will want to save it to your computer. The first tab is the Council Plan. It's the summary. So here's what I was talking about with the tab numbers, the department, kind of what type of type it is, you know, fleet, building, equipment, and then the levy or impact fee funding or debt funding and a description. So these first columns, basically through column N, that's the summary that you guys got in the agenda packets. What this does is it breaks it out even further if we move to the right. You know, you get it by year, but then you get it by what's getting funded by the levy, what's going to get funded by debt, and what is getting funded by other items. And then if you keep going over, there is some notes or changes for 2026. And then there's a spot for you built in here that you guys can kind of put your notes if there's anything you guys want to talk about at next week's capital meeting. So the other thing I want to show you is towards the bottom here, if I scroll down, we do have a funding proposal. That's where we're at right now. You can see that, you know, we have a mix of funding between debt. We've got that fund balance that's been talked about, our estimated levy, and we do have about $28,000 available, kind of based on this funding proposal. So from here, I would like to just kind of walk you through, you know, you're going through your view. Now you're ready to click on a tab. So we'll pick on the sweet sweeper replacement. So the first column, you can click, and it'll bring you to that tab for the support for information on that capital request. So you can go on here. It's broken down by what year, kind of, you know, is it levy-funded? Other ones might have debt, impact fees, just depends on what you're looking at. And then, and this is what the departments are completing as part of their request. So they're giving a description, kind of, you know, what's the impact? Why do we need this? And then if there's been any changes, you know, this one, for example, was first put on the 21 Capital Plan. 2023 and 2025, we've seen some increases just based on increased costs. Then on the top of every tab, there's this nice button that we have linked that if you go back to Council Plan, if you click it, it will take you back to the summary tab. So it should be pretty easy. You know, if there's a specific one you want to look at, click on it. It will take you there. And then when you're ready to go back to the summary, you just got to click on the Go Back to Council Plan tab. So I'm just walking through the city worksheet. The utility one is very similar setup, looks the same except for, instead of it being broken down by levy, there's columns for wastewater, water, electric, and other, which would be debt. And then there's a funding summary down at the bottom.
And after you download these, if you have any questions, we can, Hannah's happy to help and Steve and Mark and I, so if anybody has any questions, let us know because we want you to be able to dig into those really quickly because we're going to be going through them next week.
So, yep, you guys have your handouts, shows you where to go. I do have on here some screenshots that kind of, you know, we walked through that street sweeper, so you can click on it, click on the blue item to go to that corresponding detail page. And then when you're on that page, when you're ready to go back to the council plan, you can click on that. All right, next week is the budget workshop on Thursday. We're going to basically go through, review, discuss, recommend approval of the proposed 2026 capital plans and discuss the 27 through 30 capital plans. Here's the agenda that we're going to go through. We're going to start out with the utilities, and then from there, we'll move on to the city funds. So again, summarizing our goal for next week, we'll go through all the questions that you have, city side and utility side for 2026, you know, get a recommendation to move that along in the budget process, and then also a consensus on 2027 through 2030.
And also, if you have questions as you go through them, email Mark, and he'll compile everything, get all the answers with our finance team, and get it back to you so you can get answers to questions. And then everybody will get the responses back. So the more prepared we are, the better. We don't have a backup budget worksheet for next week. So we're going to stay Thursday and as long as it takes to get it done.
Yep, he took my last slide. So if you've got any questions, you can reach out to Mark, and we'll go from there. So, or actually, well, do you have any questions right now before we move on, but?
I've got one. On the funding sources, it said other funding sources. Could you explain that real quick?
Yep, let me go back to that. That is us trying to summarize outside of basically levy and debt and then the general fund that we've been spending down as well as the interest. So right here, it shows you that 2.4 million of other funding sources. We have a little breakdown on the side. And there is a separate section, kind of the furthest column over, but there's from the transportation or the highway impact fee funds, there's 2 million. We've got $50,000 of donations.
I didn't see that other part.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Not a problem. Any other questions?
I probably should know this after doing this for a while, but maybe I've never asked the question, how are the items vetted when they get put on this? I mean, is this originally done by the finance department, and then it moves to city administrator? Or is it departments just put on whatever they want for the next five years? Or is there some vetting? Or is there some earlier process before it comes to us where people say, I don't think you should put that on anywhere?
May I have Mark take that?
So this process for the items that you're seeing here tonight started probably five years ago. As you can see, we have items out to 2030. And so at that time, we start looking at what vehicles in our plans because we look for a vehicle might last seven years, 10 years, 15 years, and we place them on there in that order. As they start moving closer, they get reviewed, scrutinized more.
Okay.
To determine, is it holding up as well as we thought it would? Do we need to move it up a year for replacement? Can we move it back a year? So they do all that. But the departments put together all their requests. They send them through. They go to Finance. Finance gets everything. They look at the dollar amounts. They'll make suggestions, and then I go through it. And matter of fact, on this one, and some of it was just doubling up on some of the numbers as, you know, if DPW and Parks were each doing a project, they each had them listed at the full cost. But when this first came to us, it was $500,000 over the amount that we wanted to be able to spend. And so then we go through and we look and say, does this need to happen this year? Can this move here? Is this the right cost, or did we just throw a number in? So we vet that through that process. And then once we get to the point where this one, and actually, we went from being 500,000 over to a surplus of 28,000, which we feel comfortable leaving and there knowing that a lot of times when we go out and finally bid these vehicles and other things, that they generally will come in a little bit higher, so we would have those funds for that. But that's the process we've gone through to get us to where we're at tonight.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Karen?
On the scheduling. So when did this officially get changed to Thursday? I thought that was our backup day.
It was. I need to send out an email. I was going to make it as an announcement under Staff Announcements to let you know that we have to move that meeting to the Thursday.
Okay, you know what? I'm really kind of sad about this because I scheduled my vacation to leave the next day after the 22nd because we normally don't need that backup date.
Yeah.
And no, I'm not going to be there. So I wish this had been a bigger discussion.
This just came up today.
Well, I know, but still, I'm not, I don't think it's fair to change it when I made these vacation plans and maybe others made plans like almost a year ago.
Yeah, Karen, I can comment on that. I think that the move was made because the 22nd is the date for the police fundraiser event?
I understand that that's probably why, but this meeting was on the calendar before that.
Well, that may be. It just got set with a date when they were available to have the fundraising event at the facility.
Yeah.
That's donating the time, so.
I know, I understand, but then maybe who's ever involved with that should have this be their priority, that they have to be here on the 22nd instead of inconveniencing some of us who had this down.
And if we want to take that ended?
That's both Matt and I that are, that made that decision on the date and the venue. And it came down to the venue. It came down to the PD's calendar. And it also came down to the fact that we already committed to next week, Tuesday and Thursday, a year ago, knowing that most likely we only needed one date and knowing not to maybe schedule a vacation, knowing that we already committed to those two dates for the workshop.
In all fairness, this is usually not that big of a deal. Last year, we got through this in an hour and a half.
Yeah, I know, but I'm still disappointed because the first meeting is always our priority, and we always pound it out, and we never need the backup date. So I'm just disappointed, so.
Point heard and taken. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much, Hannah.
Just a reminder to save, you know, when you download those spreadsheets, just make sure you save them before you start making.
Thanks, Hannah, thanks for all your help.
An awful lot of work to put all that together with you and your team and with Steve, and so thank you very much.
Good system.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Like to entertain a motion to close a committee of the whole?
So moved.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. We have about two minutes, and we'll go ahead and start the common council meeting.
120.
Let's go.
Later. We're not going to do that again.
For those in the audience that came for the public hearing or want to make comments or suggestions during that part of the agenda, there are blue cards. Jason's holding them up. Please fill out those blue cards, and we'll be happy to hear your thoughts and feedback with respect to the public hearing or any other comments or suggestions you have for the council tonight. We'll be starting in about one minute.
Chief, you found your calling.
Gina, you ready?
Mark?
Okay. You're justified. You're justified. I found out today.
I'll make sure they're correct. And if they're not, it's on you.
Yeah.
He's the one, I'm the one in jail, right? You look good in orange.
What did he just say?
I kind of miss seeing you around town with your bright vest on.
I can start wearing that soon, anytime, you know? I'd be a lot more comfortable.
Than a tie, right?
My wife always hated the shorts with.
Okay, everybody, we ready to roll? We ready, Gina?
Yes.
I'd like to call the order. The City of O'Conne Moa Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 15, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
If all of you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please call roll, Gina?
Sure. Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman McConnell.
Here.
Alderman Youngworth.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Oatman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
And Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Our first item up is a public hearing. Public hearing is for Costco. The purpose is to hear public comment to amend the plan development ordinance for the project known as Costco Wholesale Warehouse to be identified as PD 225. The parcel is that the easternmost portion of tax key, oh, number OC OC 0630.999.017, and the land's located south of Papst Farms Boulevard, north of I-94, and west of Sawyer Road. This request will create a planned development overlay district and change the zoning from general commercial to general commercial with PD overlay. If approved, the applicant intends to construct a 161,552-square-foot Costco Wholesale Warehouse store, including a detached vehicle fueling facility containing three, excuse me, containing 12 gasoline pumps and three future outlots. The planned development overlay is to provide site flexibility, including allowing the site to exceed the maximum number of parking stalls and lot coverage and reduce the pavement setback requirement. So this public hearing is now open. We're going to start with Mr. Gallo, our planner, who's going to go through and give us a brief overview of this project. Then we'll open it up to the public for public comment. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor. The city staff of the Planning Department did receive an application for the creation of a overlay district. It's called a planned development. It's basically taking the zoning and changing it to create a district that allows for some flexibility for the requirements. I'm going to go through what they're requesting, show you some photos, tell you what the plan commission did. So the Costco is located on Papst Farms Boulevard, right off of I-94 here. It is going to be west of the Sawyer Road interchange. This is the Fleet Farm Store. This is an example or a map taken out of their traffic impact study, kind of showing you the traffic, how much is coming from each direction. Most of it's going to be coming from I-94 here, coming up, and some of it's going to be coming down Papst Road, but this is the general location. I also want to point out this area here. We're going to be talking about a stormwater facility here regarding the specific request. So that gives you some relationship of where it is. So this is what the store looks like. We've held a public hearing on this about a month ago, and that was for the uses, for the gas station use as well as the automotive repair, which is inside the building. The gas stations are detached, obviously, from the store. But this building, this is the most current update that has gone through the Architectural Commission twice, and it has been fully approved by the Architectural Commission. Again, the gas station use requires a conditional use for all gas stations. This was approved after we held that public hearing about a month ago. So tonight's public hearing is regarding site-related issues. Three things they're asking for. One, two, and three, lot coverage, parking, and the pavement setback. And we have to look at the amount of zoning flexibility and then weigh that with the public benefit. So number one is the lot coverage. When we did the site plan review, we determined that their lot coverage was actually in conformance with the zoning requirements. In the GC District, you need a 75% maximum lot coverage, and they're not there. They're at like 73. But that means they cannot develop really these outlots. Only 2% of that area would be able to be converted to hard surface. They don't want to do that. They want to maybe put more parking here or create stores, retail services in this area. So they did a calculation excluding the outlots, and they said, you know, this is under 90%. We, and we don't know what the outlots would look like. So we're asking to change the lot coverage from 75% maximum to 90%. Number two is the parking field. We have a maximum number of parking stalls allowed in the GC. We don't want things to be overparked. In this case, they are overparked by about 210 stalls. The code actually allows staff and the plan commission to allow exemptions. And I included the language in your staff review of what that exemption would be. And it says, "The proposed development, Costco, has unique characteristics such as high sales volume per floor area or low parking turnover, which creates a parking demand that exceeds the maximum ratio, which does not typically apply to comparable uses." So they could have received this without even getting, asking for a PD. The plan commission may have granted that, but they said, well, since we're going, we want to do it right. Let's just get an exemption for parking. And then pavement setback. They are asking to go from a three-foot required pavement setback to a zero. Now, the reason is this access point is shared with the Village of Summit. They were, the DOT said that has to be as far away from the roundabout as possible. So you can see, this is going to be a zero setback here. This is going to be a zero setback with the outlot. This is a zero setback. This is a shared access with the properties to the west. So they're saying, and there could be, to have less access drives in here, there could be future shared. That is something the plan commission, again, can waive without a PD, but they said, let's just get it documented in an ordinance so there's no questions in the future that the pavement setback. So really, the big one they need is lot coverage. And again, you can see the amount of green space on here that they're showing. So the lot coverage is an interesting one because this site does not have onsite stormwater. You can see there's no pond in here. You have the store footprint, the parking and the gas station, and then everything else is green space. Normally, you have stormwater ponds. This site was designed to have stormwater go off-site. We created an 11.7-acre site. I showed you earlier, this is across the street and down to the west. So, you know, this site was designed to be maximized for development purposes. And this pond is created not only for the Costco site, but the other sites over here across the street. So really, you know, we were encouraging this by creating a pond that allows the off-site. So they gave their rationale in a statement. You've all received this in their pocket, for the lot coverage, the parking demand, and they talk about how many stalls they typically have at their stores. They know how many stalls they need. In fact, they think they might need more, but they're holding off on that. They talk about the lot line setbacks on how they would like to go down to zero. And then they start talking about the public benefit. Again, you have to weigh, as the common council members, what is the public benefit versus the zoning exemptions? If they're asking for a lot of zoning exemptions, they should be giving you a lot of public benefit. In this case, they really only need the lot coverage. The parking and pavement could have been granted in a different method. But for, what are they giving us for the public benefit? Well, the big thing is off-site improvements. Traffic signals are going to be proposed, and the city is not paying for those. Those, that's something that could have been negotiated, but we are not paying for that. There's no public TIF dollars for the Costco site. So that's one big thing. They are doing other off-site improvements, all the way up off of the adjacent roads. There's turn lanes. There's other pavement being added on Sawyer Road and Valley. You know, there's all sorts of things. The TIA was completed, and there's pages and pages of what needs to be accomplished to handle this traffic. And the city's not donating or paying for any of that. They're also bringing jobs to the community. They stated in their write-up about the number of jobs, and they said anywhere from 150 to 200 employees at each site. Half of those are full-time. Half of them are part-time. But they do give benefits to even the part-time employees, and they have very low turnover because they do have such high pay and good benefits. So, and then they're bringing in other development to the area. That's an important one. Since Costco has been announced, the city has been approached by several companies that are showing interest in coming to the city. So this is going to be, hopefully, a very lucrative thing for bringing other developments in. The other thing that they asked for that kind of came up since their conditional use permit was the hours. They thought the hours of the gas station were going to be just an anticipated thing, not set in stone. But they have since had a nationwide change in their hours Monday through Friday for the gas station. They would like that to be, we had it set at, ending at 9:00 PM in the evening. They would like to extend that to 10:00 PM so it's consistent with all of their other stores. So we have a PD ordinance that you're acting on tonight, and the plan commission did recommend approval. And I do have some changes, blacklined and strike-through, of what the plan commission did. But we cover a lot of the things in here, like the gas station hours is in here, the technical concerns regarding landscaping. And then the public benefits, the plan commission made some changes to that. Initially, they agreed with A, off-site public improvements, B, the future outlot review. The applicant said that, you know, those outlots, they understand, when we had the first public hearing, there was concerns raised by some of the council members that the outlots, you know... that the outlots, you know, they want to make sure that they blend in with the community and that the architecture is the, what they talk about, high-end. But the Plan Commission felt it would be more ideal if the architecture stopped at the Architectural Commission and the site plan stopped at the Plan Commission. So they removed the language that it goes to the common council, and it was revised to say the approval process for the site plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Plan Commission and the architectural plans be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Commission and not come forward to you guys. So that's in there as a strike-through. If it's approved, it would not come forward to you guys. And then the Plan Commission had some concerns about landscaping that I'm going to get into, and this, and they added, working with planning staff on an updated landscaping plan, they have since made some changes, and I'll share those with you. So the owner is Pabst Farms of the land. They're represented here this evening in the audience. They did submit a letter of approval for this application. These are the landscaping plans. I want to just kind of share with you some of the updates. The first version that came through on the roundabouts had no landscaping. And it was just kind of a paved-over thing. It kind of looked like a giant speed hump. So, you know, the Plan Commission said, you know, those are really designed to, supposed to direct people around, know that when you're coming up to a roundabout, you see something that you know you got to drive around it, not over the top of it. So that was changed, and this is their updated plans for the roundabout. And they have all the species identified and what size they are on a later page. But, so these were not provided to you because I just received them this week. And then the Plan Commission noticed on the landscaping plan that the backside facing I-94 had a lot of deciduous trees that would lose their leaves in the winter. And they asked that some of that be replaced with evergreens for year-round screening. Costco went ahead and did that. Initially, I have this written down somewhere. They were kind of right at the absolute minimum landscaping of what they needed. And now they're at around 32,000 landscaping points. Now, 32 is a lot, 32,000. We, this is probably the most landscaping points in the whole city. Now, instead of going right to 32,000, they've upped their game, and they've added more points. They're at 34,158. So they now are exceeding the minimum amount by quite a bit. So this is what the backside would look like. There's a mix of evergreens and deciduous. This is looking from the other side. This is still along I-94 with some evergreen-type trees. And then this is kind of the before and the prior plan, just to give you an idea. You know, obviously, they did have some evergreens. This clump here, everything else was deciduous. Now they have a mix of evergreens in there. So I'm available to answer any questions. You do have the updated ordinance in your packet that you'd be acting on. The Plan Commission did send this to you after a thorough review of all of it. They felt that the zoning exemptions that they're asking for were consistent with the public benefit, and they did recommend approval.
So now we're going to hear from the public. I have two blue cards. If anyone else would like to talk about this at the public hearing, please see Jason grab a blue card. We'd be happy to hear your viewpoints. When you come to the podium, please state your name, your mailing address, and what community you live in. First one up is Robert Schmidt. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Robert Schmidt. We live on Bartlett Road, which is off from Sawyer. I haven't heard anything about how traffic is going to be handled on Sawyer Road. Since the construction has started on '83, our traffic is probably doubled. There is no provision that I have heard of for any traffic handling measures for anything coming out of Bartlett Road.
That's in the Village of Summit, correct? That's in the Village of Summit, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So where Bartlett comes on to Sawyer, that's quite an ordeal to get on the Sawyer Road. And that's our only option because it's a dead end. So I would like to see some provision for traffic handling on Sawyer. We have a load of traffic now, and I hadn't heard that addressed. I'm assuming this is early in the project, but we don't want it neglected.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person up is Mark Boomhoffer. I'm not sure if I... Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mark Umhafer.
I'm Hafer.
I live on Wall-E Drive, which is on Sawyer, just off Sawyer Road in Lake Country Village. Coincidentally, it's the same thing. The traffic control on Sawyer Road is, was my concern or curiosity is. I don't know if there's going to be signals at Valley and Sawyer, and maybe even a signal leaving and coming into our subdivision off of Sawyer, or I guess Bartlett's an issue as well. So I just don't know if that's been planned now or that's coming in the future, when we would learn about that.
We'll share that when this agenda item comes up in the agenda tonight. So that, we'll have Jason discuss that. Do you have any other further questions or comments for the council?
I do not.
Okay. Do we have any other comments in this public hearing? Anyone that would like to talk about the Costco P D overlay? Hearing none, we're going to move on. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for July 1, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next are our comments or suggestions from citizens. I don't have any further blue cards. You're also welcome to share any comment that you have on any issue with the alderman at this time. Seeing no comments, we'll move on to our next item. Like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda items in the Treasury Report 7A1.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and on to our committee reports. We're starting off with finance. Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3298, approving the second quarter 2025 grant donations and budget amendments. Hannah?
Yep. Presented to you tonight are the donations that we received in quarter two. We like to bring those to you guys to just tell you what we received. And then we're looking for authorization to spend the grant or the donation money that we received. You can see we have donations for police and canine operating supplies. We've got sponsorships for the 150th memorial trees and bench plaques. We got the $275,000 for the boat launch from the Lac La Belle Lake District. And we have some donations from tourism for a few different projects. Also on this budget amendment is using previously received donations for the pickleball maintenance at the Northeast Region Pickleball Courts.
Questions or comments from council? Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Under Committee Reports on Protection and Welfare, Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3296, granting new reserve 2025, 2026 Class B intoxicated liquor-fermented malt beverage license to Pub Summit 16 LLC. Gina?
Thank you. So this was before protection and welfare, where it was discussed tonight, and it was just moving forward to council without a recommendation. This is a new reserve Class B full liquor license application from Pub Summit 16 for on-premise consumption at their location 1004 Summit Avenue, Suite 200, for a seven-seat full-service bar area with 751 square feet of space. This would be in addition to the Class A license currently held at the gas station side of the buil, at the gas station side of the building. And as you know, the city is at quota for the full liquor licenses, and we're in reserve status with eight full on-premise reserve licenses remaining at this time. So with several economic development opportunities occurring within the city, the council will need to determine if this is the highest and best use of a reserve liquor license with the limited number available. And we do have applicant Jay Wallya available to answer any questions for you.
Great. Alderman Ellis?
I have to, carefully thinking about this. I don't know if this is the highest and best use of our licenses, especially with the new developments that potentially we could be having. I don't know how anybody else feels, but this is a, I just, I just don't know if this is our best use of using these licenses.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I agree with you, Kevin, and some of the comments that were made in the prior meeting. And it's, it's nothing personal. But if we have to determine highest and best use, and we only have eight of these licenses next, I'm just not sure this is it.
Any other comments from aldermen? With the applicant, do you have anything you'd like to say to the council? You're welcome to come up. Please introduce yourself, state your name, your address, and where you live.
Good evening. Attorney General Jay Wallya, 4725 North 159th Street, Brookfield, Wisconsin, 53005. And I'd like to tell you a little bit of my personal history.
Can you pull the microphone up a little bit? That is going to help. Go ahead.
I'd like to...
Thank you.
Have, obviously, my aunt and uncle were here. They retired. They were a corner of a hospital. She was a doctor, and she's the one who sponsored me. I came over, and then we have a very good tie with her. She was a, and, you know, and my cousin, everybody here. And then a, this property, you know, actually, I'm helping, me, my wife, and I'm helping my daughter. She live in, around this area, but she had personal tragedy. Because of that, we end up doing more than what we are expecting yet because of, she had personal tragedy in her life. And we're trying to, you know, and then we did, so that's why I'm more involved with this. And, you know, just like anybody, any parent does. And about this station, you know, mostly, as I told, her name is America Wallya. She live in around this neighborhood, you know. She live in Delaware right now. And, but she had personal, so I, I and my wife, we are more involved in this than, than we wanted to. And on this particular location, we helped her spend over $250,000 to remodel the car wash, and which obviously overtracked. And in car wash business, you know, there's so many new, big one came about. So that was not idle. So right now, the car wash is sitting idle for almost a couple of years. And then we discussed with Mr. Jason Gallo about office area. We want to remodel for this. I've been, Mr. Jason Gallo has been great. We've been talking to him over two years for this remodeling. He recommended, you know, we have to have remodeling done before we can come in front of you. So we, with the, we have architect involved, and we have, you know, a Mr. Gallo's involved with a, and then it's all we comply with, all the parking requirement and everything else. And then, and then basically, we, based upon a Mr. Gallo's guidance, we submit the full architect plan to build to the state. The state got approved. And then we talked to the, you know, we went through the fire department, and we went through the building department. So everything been approved. And then obviously, that, we already spent that money for that place. And with the, almost we spent our last two years with Mr. Jason Gallo, been very great to guidance us. And then we talked to the neighbors. They're, it's like a captured audience there. But you guys know the, you know, neighborhood. There are like two subdivisions, like mostly, I think, I believe it's east and west side, both side. I think they are more, you know, it's like their local place. Almost everybody, you know, they know the place for a long time. And then, so I, I don't want to call it pity, but, you know, obviously, because of my daughter, you know. And then about the best use, there's four, I know Mr. Gallo, like in other committees, they were talking about Pabst holding for a long time. I've been, since I've been talking, Mr. Gallo told me about those. And then, and right now, we have eight, and eight are already available. And if you guys are kind enough to approve it, we are ready right now. And another thing, I think, it shows like seven, seven seats. But I think it's a, it's a, I think, 752 or whatever the area is. If I remember correctly, normally, a, from fire department, Mr. Adam told me that normally he will come. And from my past experience, you guys know more than I do, but usually the 15 per person, so like close to 40 people we can serve. I think, I could be wrong, but, and another, and so that means we can serve more than what we already, it's already ready to go. We, what we did is, including the remodeling, it's in the plan. And we did a handicap bathroom and other stuff, and other bathroom, and the rest of the remodeling inside the place. And, and the parking wise, we complied with 12. But actually, since car wash is not working, I, at least not more, there like, there was spaces for the, all the, you know, that, what do they call the, for the vacuum and stuff. They're sitting, those parking are there. And then once, even today, even though we have car wash equipment there, but it's not working for almost two year. And so then all around it, we have a 12 plan shows. I think at least 20 more, if not more. I'm just guessing because of the, all the, even like, without doing anything, all the, like four is near the sign because of, you know, the vacuum. And then there's the other areas and the ones, all the surrounding, you know, you have to, so we will have plenty of parking. And another thing is because of a lot of those two, two subdivisions, they're a kind of a target. Another thing is because of what happened with our, the loss for the car wash. And we were able to remodel. And another thing, I think we can serve those neighbors. And, and plus, you know, we are ready today. And plus, I don't know, you guys know more about the, about that, how the, how the liquor license work. But my understanding is as you grow, you will have more license too.
No, and I think we really appreciate all the detail.
I really appreciate.
And the, and the passion. I think the council's job is to say, is this the best way to use a very limited supply of liquor license? We have a question here from Alderman Shellpepper.
I don't have a question.
You don't? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had one. Any, any other questions from council? Any, any questions for the applicant?
Comments?
Go ahead.
With a comment, not a, not a question?
Yeah, comments, fine.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, Mr. Wallya, appreciate you coming here, spending the time, you know, talking about the background. My understanding is the municipality has broad authority over determining whether or not we want to issue a Class B liquor license. Just because we have them doesn't necessarily need, that we need to award them. It needs to be based on a reason why we don't need to do it. But unless it meets, you know, a really higher investment in the community that it seems like it's really bringing something forward. I don't have an outcry from constituents asking for more liquor establishments that are selling alcohol. So it's, I mean, I'd have to see... So it's, I mean, I'd have to see something special that seems like it's going to be really adding and has some prospects for success to want to, you know, award those as well. And the plan that, you know, we've been presented just doesn't seem to do that. I mean, it seems like maybe, I know there's not limitations on beer sales. I don't know if that's another option that could be considered to see if maybe that's successful, and then you could look at another option. But, you know, I think the first job I ever had was at that car wash. And the pride that was in that establishment and the property isn't the same as what I see today and what I've seen the last few years. And I understand there might be family issues and other things going on, but the type of investment and maintenance of the property doesn't engender trust in me. It makes me, I'm not, I don't feel like, based on what I've already seen there, that this plan you're presenting is going to, you know, change that. And so if there's maybe other opportunities, like I said, to utilize like a beer opportunity, that'd be great. But what I'm seeing right now doesn't meet the requirements of what I feel like isn't the best and highest use for our community, understanding that we have eight.
Alderman McConnell.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I can certainly sympathize with trying to squeeze every bit of space out of a small building. I did that for two years in my own business, and I can understand it's a struggle. My concern would be is how you plan on making money and being profitable with such a tiny space and what you would need to do in order to ensure revenue. And you mentioned some of the electronic games and things like that. And I don't think having a really small pub or bar that is generating a lot of income around the electronic games machines is really what we want for Economwalk. Now, you did mention earlier that you want this to be a community bar. And to echo Alderman Shellpepper's comments, you know, if you can show some investment and say like, hey, we want to clean the place up and make it a desirable place for the community, that, you know, outdoor seating, things like that, I can certainly get on board with that. Like, I believe in giving everybody an opportunity, but would like to see a business plan that doesn't necessarily maybe include additional revenue to support the bar.
No, that's what I, like in our business plan too. We, because we have to go back to the bank to get more, you know, our plan is if you guys feel enough us to grant this, we are, I don't know if that can be one of the condition or hold the license until...
I think what they're telling you is that they want to see more and have confidence that it's going to happen, unless I misspeaking. Let me know. Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Kind of how I'm, and I, what you guys both said was 100% on, and if I'm understanding this correctly, but I have a question first. What is the, like, remind me, what are the rules with, like, is it just beer and wine or just beer? Do we give those out unconditional? I mean, how do those work?
There are no quotas on the Class B beer only. You can get a wine with that, but then it's a percentage of sales is related to food, whether or not you qualify for the additional C.
For, and I'm just thinking out loud, okay? Just thinking out loud. Could we tonight give, grant him a beer license? Or would he have to come back under like a new agenda item?
I think I would need a new application because we publish those.
He's shaking his head.
Well, let's stand and answer.
We agree.
Okay, so what I, I guess what I would like to see, I mean, if this is something that you want to do, and I appreciate the fact that you said you've put some money into this already to get to where you are. And I understand that's, you know, kind of a gamble on doing that, not knowing if you're going to get that liquor license. I would like to see you come back, maybe ask for that beer license. And then what Alderman Rosick, not Rosick, sorry, McConnell and Shellpepper said, and I mean this respectfully, sir.
Absolutely.
When you drive by, and I drive by that place all the time, and I said to you and, you know, in committee, just like Alderman Shellpepper, my husband worked there for a long time as a young man or teenager. And when I drive by, that place doesn't scream to me like, I want to go have a drink there. It's, it is not well-kept. So if we could see some investment in the entire, in the entire property, and if you are successful in the beer sales and things go well, then maybe come back and, you know, we could revisit the full liquor license. I would be in favor of that, but I'm not in favor of the full liquor license tonight.
So at this, at this time, we have...
I have one question.
Go ahead.
If you mind, my question about, let's say, if you guys approve the license, can be hold conditionally that what my future plan is with the more remodeling, you know, with the, in place of the, you know, obviously, it has to be...
Not, not at this time unless an Alderman wants to adjust the motion. So at this, the way it's written right now, there's no motion. But if you just, if you're looking at...
He's asking is if he has, if we, if he comes back at a later date and gets a beer, just a beer license, can he still go forth with his remodeling?
He wants the license and hold it condition upon him fixing it up to the extent that we will.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, the future, whatever, in the future plan, like having the architect done, all the, get rid of the car wash, have come up with the whole...
No, no. So I mean, and it would be a gamble whether or not you come back in two years, the property looks immaculate, the liquor license could be gone.
That's why if you can approve with the condition, hold.
No, no.
I don't know if that's...
Yeah, that...
That's up to the council and their policy. They have the ability to do that. I don't think that will happen. But that's up to the council based on if they make a motion.
All right.
And I'm just second. Alderman Ellis.
Yeah, I believe prior to you, the Hohlenbicks owned that property. And I could be wrong, but I also have to agree with all of the Aldermen here. When I drive by there, it just doesn't look right. And my concern is, once again, best and highest use of what we have, which is limited. And I just don't know if that is really the best and highest use for what we have.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
So I think what you're hearing from us is this does not preclude you from coming back, but I think we'd all like to see a better and stronger plan. And I have a suggestion for you because this property sort of semi reminds me of a property in New Berlin. And it's, the establishment that's there is the Cleveland Bar and Pub or Pub and Grill. I would suggest to you that you drive by that, kind of go inside, look at their concept, because I think maybe that's a concept that would potentially work on this property. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
At this time, Alderman Rosick?
I'm not going to beat this to death, but we did, we've done this before. Ginger ovens came for a full liquor license a couple of years ago. They were very small. They didn't really have a good plan together on how they were going to use the liquor license. They came back, got a beer and wine, and they ultimately weren't successful. And it wasn't because they didn't get the liquor license, they just didn't have the traffic, they didn't have a good business plan, I think. So you can come back, get the beer and wine potentially, test it out with that, and like everyone else said, you know, come back with maybe a slightly better plan. So what we're doing tonight is not unusual. We've done it before. We've asked people to experiment, work on their business plan, work on their process, work on the look, and then maybe come back if they're getting that foot traffic after the beer license, which is on, we can give a million of those out, so.
So at this time, is there a motion that someone would like to make at this time? Seeing no motion, there's no motion to approve at this time, and I think you've heard from the council, and, you know, thank you for coming and sharing your idea and consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy the legal requirement? Actually, no.
Wait, what was the question?
I asked if the... There's no motion. And the statute requires if you do not approve it, you must give a letter to the applicant that states the reason why it was not approved. So I would prefer that there be an actual motion with an articulated reason that we could put in writing to the applicant.
Wait, what, the statute requires us to make a motion not to approve?
Well, how is the clerk going to write your sentiment in terms of what the reasons are for not approving?
Well, the statute says it's about granting a liquor license. We're not granting it, we're not voting on it.
I know.
And I think we put enough in the record already. We talked about business plans, we talked about highest and best use amongst all the council members.
Statute.
So the other comments, since no motion was made, can we take the comments from Gina, and then if there's a statutory requirement, do we need to send that letter? Do we have the information?
You do have to send...
If we have the letter, then we can put that information in that.
I will read you the statute.
Oh, yeah.
I got to find it. Chapter 125 is impossible.
Can it be a motion to deny the license?
It's 12504, isn't it, Stan?
The battle of the lawyers.
Most positive.
You know, we could save a lot of time. I'll make a motion.
No, don't make a motion. 12504 sub 5.
Sir, what we're trying to do is make sure that we do this properly. I don't think the...
No, not 05.
The sentiment hasn't changed.
It's a qualification.
I just want to be clear that we're just trying to make sure we do it the right way, and it's very clear and concise for you.
Nope, it's not 05.
Jennifer, do you want to expand?
It is in the renewals and new applications. Let me find it. Such a long statute.
Are we paying you by the hour?
No. This chapter is terrible.
Stan, I agree with you that it's a long chapter, but I don't, I don't recall ever reading in that chapter.
It is absolutely in there that you must send a letter to the applicant, given the reasons why it was not issued.
That's not what you just said to us, though. You said we, you said we had to make a vote. I'm saying we don't have to vote on it.
Okay, so direct the clerk to say, don't issue the license, and here are the reasons why.
I think we've provided those reasons.
So I...
Oh, wait a minute, here we go. Refusal to issue, 12512.
So without objection, I would like to ask the clerk to craft a letter for review by city attorney and city administrator for the reasoning why this was not voted and approved this evening. Does anyone have any objections to that? Okay. I'm going to give you about one more minute to tell us that.
No, I will read it. Three of 12519, refusals by local authorities to issue licenses. If a municipal governing body decides not to issue a license, issue a new license on this chapter, it shall notify the applicant for the new license of the decision, which you have not made, because you haven't said no, not to issue the license. The notice shall be in writing and state the reasons for that decision.
So what you're...
You don't take any action, you haven't said no, we're not going to give you the license.
So someone needs to make a motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to, should I make a motion to deny or to approve? A motion as written or... Okay, I'll make a motion to deny the liquor license.
For the reasons stated on this...
For the reasons as stated in the conversation by all the Aldermen.
And I second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
So, sir, we're going to send off a letter to add clarification as to why it was not approved tonight. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item, which is utility, and consider Act on Resolution 25-R, 3297, awarding Fleet Maintenance Air Handling Unit Replacement to Mechanical Incorporated, doing business as Helm Services.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the 2025 capital budget for the Fleet Department was the replacement of one of two air handling units at the Fleet Maintenance Shop. One of the existing units does not work and needs to be replaced. Vehicle repair, welding, limited painting in the Fleet Shop can contaminate the air quality. The air handling units provide a fresh air exchange for the work area. So we went out to bid. Advertisements were placed June 5th and June 12th in the Economwalk Enterprise and on the city website, Quest, and in the Daily Reporter from June 5th to July 1st. As a condition, a site visit was required as part of the bid process, and sealed bids were accepted until July 1st. At 11:00 a.m. on July 1st, the bids were opened and read aloud. Four bids were received, ranging from $53,257 to $54,888. Therefore, all four bids were within the approved budget of $55,000 that we had approved. However, two bids did not qualify. The bid from Lee Mechanical was disqualified because they did not provide a bid bond and they did not attend the mandatory site visit. Lee Mechanical was also disqualified because they didn't provide a bid bond. Of the two remaining bids, Southport Engineering Systems and Lee Mechanical, we chose to go with the lowest qualifying bid for Mechanical Incorporated doing business as Helm Service for the qualifying bid of $53,584, or recommended it. Fleet recommends to council the acceptance of the lowest qualifying bid in the amount of $53,584 for Mechanical Incorporated doing business as Helm Services.
Do we have any questions or comments from the Alderman? Alderman Ellis?
Have we used them before?
I'm not sure. Not that I can recall. But with the bids all being within $1,600 of each other, we know we got a decent price, and they did show up and were able to do the site viewing of the air handling unit. I wouldn't consider this like a high, highly difficult job.
The second bid, have we used them before?
Yeah, we do.
They might be at...
We do Southport, yeah.
Southport, is that the one that's at the wastewater?
Southport, the second bid. Southport's done work in the city.
Yep.
And how was their work?
They're currently working at the treatment plant now. They were just awarded the contract for the treatment plant.
It's nice to see some new bids coming in, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Good.
I just wanted for...
Clarification. Good. Any other comments from the Aldermen? Like to entertain a motion, please?
Sub move, Rosick.
Second. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Under our two plan commission items for this evening, consider Act on Ordinance 25-O1102 to create a planned development overlay district for Costco on 23.26 acres located at the south of Pabst Farms Boulevard, north of I-94, and west of Sawyer Road. This is the first reading, council. You do have the option to waive the second reading. So I believe, Jason, if you have any additional comments, I know there were some comments about traffic in Summit on Sawyer Road.
Yeah, I can maybe comment on that. There's representatives here that maybe have a better idea, but you're right, we held the public hearing, we heard a couple of comments about the traffic generated. I can tell you that they've produced a traffic impact analysis by a very reputable firm called Taddy, who's a leader in this area. There's a lot of recommendations and requirements listed in the TIA of what they have to do to accommodate this traffic load. This is going to be one of the biggest traffic generators in the whole city. There's changes, one specific question was, are there going to be traffic lights on Sawyer Road and Valley? No, there's not, but there's going to be improvements to that intersection being proposed with additional pavement, turn lanes, et cetera. So, you know, Costco's been doing this a long time. They've got a lot of traffic history, they know what they're going to generate, and the DOT at the state and as well as Waukesha County, as well as the city staff, were all reviewing that study, and the recommendations will be followed through with what's needed to accommodate this traffic load.
Thank you, Jason, for that summary. Any questions or comments for, from the Aldermen? Also, we have the applicants here and the property owner here. So if you would like to ask any specific questions, we can also do that at this time. Alderman Shellpepper?
I had a question for Jason. Jason, we made some changes to our...
I had a question for Jason. Jason, we made some changes to our fuel delivery ordinance a few months ago. I don't know if there was any other changes around exemptions for fuel, like when you're actually fueling, what times the gas stations are open, or if it was just when, you know, auto repair was open. But could you just like recap again what changes we made and exemptions we made a couple of months ago?
Sure.
Or a month ago?
It's a great question. The, for fueling gasoline service stations, there was, deliveries were cut off at a certain time. And that did not work for the Costco operations. They get fuel, you know, more frequent than other gas stations do. And they have trucks that go there in, you know, all hours of the day. So we changed the zoning ordinance text that said that deliveries were still limited to a gas station, but fuel deliveries could be 24 hours a day.
Okay.
But we have no restrictions about hours of operation for, well, the hours of operation for a fuel station. Quick trips are open 24 hours a day. We just wanted to avoid the deliveries.
So what they had, Costco had originally said was like, they were planning on doing it until 9:00, but now they're asking to do the fuel until 10:00, as in the service station itself, correct?
The, not the deliveries, the deliveries they can...
Not the delivery, but the actual operations of the service station.
Right. At 10:00, the pumps turn off.
And that's, so that's not an exemption or any sort of additional privilege? That's just them changing their original intended hours of operations from 9:00 to 10:00?
We put a restriction on Costco that other gas stations don't have. We said, "You have to close at 9:00." And they said, "Hey, we are changing our nationwide operations to 10:00."
So part of our ordinance that we had passed a month ago had limited them just till 9:00, is what you're saying?
The conditional use permit.
Okay, okay, so...
Not the ordinance.
The conditional use permit. Okay, so they're already asking for a different, a change to that, though. I mean, I guess that's just kind of disappointing. I wish we could be a little bit more transparent upfront about what the, you know, intentions are. We're already making exemptions a month ago, and now here we are, less than that, and we're already making changes again to what was anticipated.
They weren't aware of a nationwide change in all their stores, and they would like to go till 10:00, on Monday through Fridays.
I just wonder if that's, you know, is that going to be a sign of things to come? I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, if they have another change, you're going to have to come back to council, so. Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Rusty. Alderman McDonald?
I'm kind of echoing what Alderman Shellpepper was saying. It does feel like we've been stair-stepped along the way, with each request being larger than last, starting off the fuel deliveries. Then we had to change the zoning, and now we're changing the zoning again. And now we need an overlay, so Costco can get around more of the rules that we make everybody else on Economowalk play by. My challenge is, if we make these changes now, how do we in good faith enforce them to the rest of businesses here on Economowalk moving forward? I have to assume that we've already enforced these to existing businesses. So why does Costco keep getting out after out after out? The parking lot stall, to me, is not a huge issue. But the pavement setback thing is a concern. I know Alderman Ellis has mentioned that before. And then the 90% coverage thing. Our constituents, I think, are generally for Costco, but I can't imagine that they're ready to set a precedence that we're going to develop lots to 90%. We value green space in the city. It makes the city look welcoming. Having those setbacks provides more grass space. 75% coverage provides more open and grass space that makes the city look good. I think if Costco wants to do business in our city, they need to play by our rules. They've already asked for changes. We get it to them. And it does feel like, now that we've said yes, they're going to keep coming to the well and asking and asking, asking for more changes. And I was on board for it at the very beginning, but now it just seems like it's going to be this never-ending thing of us breaking our rules for one single business here in the city.
And I think when we kind of look back through the process, what they wanted to do is have all the clarity possible, and that's why they put all these things in. Because as Jason said, some of these things could have already been approved through the plan commission. So for that reason, I hear what you say, Alderman. That's not the sense that I'm getting at all. But it's also, you also have to look at the location and the financial impact it'll have for the community. If this was in downtown Economowalk, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. It's not downtown Economowalk. It's adjacent to a very busy interstate.
It's still Economowalk.
It's still Economowalk, correct. But across the street, we still have houses. We still have different things, which is true. But we also, the neighbors aren't even Economowalk. It's the Village of Summit. You haven't, we haven't had one comment tonight from anybody from the city of Economowalk. It's all come from the Village of Summit. Not that it's bad. We welcome you and thank you for coming, but... So that's just a comment, and it's not to be critical. I'm just sharing some other viewpoints. Alderman Rosak?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. To Rusty, to your point on the PD overlay, we have a lot of PD overlays in place around the city. The PD overlays isn't really an exemption from the rules. It allows us to do a couple of things that are unique maybe to the property. One of the things Jason said was, because of the coverage, because they're going to... And this is actually a comment I had, because I had some questions from folks in Summit, too, about where the runoff goes. Some people were concerned that the runoff from like a place like Costco is going to end up in Silver Lake. And what I've told them is, we have an entire Paps Farms Water Management District where this water goes to. So in this instance, you know, we created this 11-acre area to collect stormwater. What a lot of developments do to get that, the green coverage, is they put in these ponds or these green areas that just fill in. Half the times, they're ugly. I mean, frankly, we've got a ton of them in my subdivision. The dry ones are ugly. They're terrible. So I would actually prefer that they run pipes underground to the existing stormwater management spots, which they're doing, which I think is a positive. So, you know, we've got a lot of PDs in place. We grant PDs. I think we just granted some PD overlays out on the other side of town for different sized lots, different setbacks. You know, it's something that we have to kind of every once in a while make some minor changes to the plan to get something to fit, for whatever reason. Weird lot sizes, weird location. In this instance, too, we're getting the stoplights. We're getting a reformulation of the roadway there for better traffic flow. So I think there's some positives there. I've always thought of the PD overlays as a way for us to move forward with the development and make some minor concessions to get something to happen. So I'm not necessarily, you know, opposed to the PD overlay. And it is pretty typical on the ones this side. The other thing I'll just say is, and Jason mentioned a few of these, ultimately, it's going to be less travel for people going to the Costco. Very large numbers of our population in the city are all members of Costco. So they're driving 20 miles to Peewaqui instead of staying here local and maybe sticking around local. It's better for the environment. Ultimately, you have something close by that we can all shop at. It's better for our citizens. It does have good jobs. And a few of these minor changes, I don't think should hold us back here tonight. As far as the Village of Summit folks, I think, I don't think that this development's necessarily going to affect people going back up Sawyer, back towards like 16. I just, I don't see a lot of people driving up there unless they miss a turn and they don't know where they're going in those roundabouts, which does happen to me, even this time going around those roundabouts. So I don't have a huge concern about that yet, but it's also something that we can't control. Some, most of that's in the Village of Summit, and then when you get to Valley and Summit, that's a county road. We have no control over what happens on that county road. We can't even change the speed limit there.
Sawyer Road's a county road.
Sawyer's a county, too? Oh, so we have zero control. It's not only county, but also in the village. So I'm in favor of the project. I think these PD requests are actually relatively minor, considering the site and what's the economic benefit.
And for the Summit folks, if you have some ideas, we're happy to work with the Village of Summit. It's a great group of people and a wonderful board. You know, if there are things we can collaborate with and try to help in any of these issues for any of the developments that happen in the city, we're more than happy to entertain that. So thank you very much for coming.
Well, and to that point, to that point, I actually talked to several of your board members earlier this week about the stormwater issues and where the water's going. So I've explained that to them. I think they understand it. So I think it's a good thing ultimately.
Alderman Mulder? He's been very patient.
Yeah, I think that, I don't like the 90% coverage either. I do think if you add in the portion of the stormwater area that would, you know, that is needed for that runoff, you probably get back to your 70%. On the other hand, this is consistent with every Costco installation I've seen anywhere, which is just a giant block of concrete with minimal trees and outlots. That may be unfair, but this is not at all surprising to me. I wouldn't expect there to be a lot of greenery. I do appreciate how many that they're putting in extra 2,000 points of landscaping in here. I mean, they're acknowledging our desires, but the honest thing is, it's going to be packed full of people all the time, and they need lots of parking. So I'm, you know, I haven't heard, I know there's some people in the community not in favor of this. I hear mostly people really excited about it. And I think, to your point, Matt, people are already here. We might as well have the tax benefit of having a Costco here if our, and keep it local. There's other projects going on in that area that this is going to be a great anchor for that whole area that's going to help other, other parts of Paps Farms, I think, just continue to take off and finally have some infill in that whole area after now 25 years. So if it's not going to be Costco, I don't know whatever goes there, honestly, then we might as well just...
Alderman Spiegelberg, and then Alderman Shellpepper?
Number one, I don't think, personally, I don't think the public benefit outweighs the ask. And that's to those of you who have been and supported us. Number two, I'm going to be voting against this to stay consistent with my vote against the zoning of it, to be a voice for a lot of people that aren't in favor of this and that would have preferred to keep the zoning as a business park and do something more special there than a big Costco.
Alderman Spig...
Shellpepper.
Shellpepper. Sorry about that.
I think the Costco's pretty special. I mean, I think that, you know, I've talked to a lot of economic development folks from southeastern Wisconsin that are very envious of the opportunity and say they wish they could have a similar one. So I think it's, you know, a unique opportunity that we'd be really missing out on to not take advantage of it. But it seems like, at the end of the day, the PD overlay is about adding additional parking. I mean, is that the crux of the issue, Jason? Is, it's not? I mean, because it seems to me like adding the extra parking spaces, that's why you're having less of the green space and why you're having to do some of these setbacks. So that, so that, I'm mistaken in that understanding?
Well, the plan commission can authorize additional parking. And I think overall, the plan commission, the sediment of the meeting was, yeah, we kind of understand they need the additional parking. They wouldn't have even needed the PD for the additional parking, the 200 additional stalls. There's exemptions written right in the code that the plan commission, and even comes to staff. I could have approved it myself.
Yeah.
So I'm not comfortable approving something that big, so I thought it should go to at least the plan commission. But it was Costco that said, "You know what? We'll get it all out on the table here. We'll share everything that we are not conforming to, and we'll take it all in the PD ordinance." Really, it comes down to, you asked your question, it's the lot coverage. That's the only thing that really violates code that needs, that warrants common council approval tonight, is the lot coverage. And I explained to you that the, as Alderman Rosak said, the stormwater goes off-site. So, you know, when you're dealing with a 20-acre site, and it's bigger than that even, 25% would be a five acres of green space. In this area, five acres, that's too valuable of property to have sitting there empty.
Isn't the lot coverage happening, though, for the parking? I mean, isn't that...
It's for the parking or for the three outlets. And right now, it'll take them several years. They've said, basically, three to five years, they'll figure out what their needs are. And that's where they'll come back.
Again, I'll clarify. The whole reason I asked the question is just, I, you know, what's the confidence that that's the number of parking that'll be needed? And the concern is, is that if you end up with all this additional parking that's not being used, that you kind of have a blighted lot?
Let's have the applicant come up, because I think that's the best.
Yeah, and so I think that would be, that'd be helpful. And I know that you're not asking for a number of parking based on, you know, just willy-nilly. So what's your level of confidence there?
Good evening. My name is Steve Cross, Costco's real estate development director, 1955 Raymond Drive, Northbrook, Illinois. Thank you for allowing me to come up here. If I could just clarify just a couple of things that have been talked about, particularly the impervious coverage. Just to be clear, on a typical site where you do not have off-site storage, about 12% to 15% of the land does get allocated to get the detention in, because that includes the pond, the wet area, as well as all the setbacks and the side slopes. So when you look at a 75% impervious coverage and you add the 15%, that's really what we're missing. That's why, as Jason alluded to, and as the developer has developed it, that off-site regional pond is a larger facility, instead of having these small two, three-acre ponds scattered around, which obviously take a lot more maintenance, probably don't operate as effectively. So really, when you come down to it, the coverage we're looking at is not any more than you would see in a typical site, with a pond tucked away in a corner somewhere. So, you know, the 90% is not way out of it. And the stormwater management plan actually allocates 100% impervious coverage on this lot. So we're even under what the calculations show. So I just wanted to be clear on that in terms of the stormwater goes. As far as the landscaping, should I touch on that as well? It's a huge amount of landscaping, 30,000 points of landscaping here. And talking to my landscape architect, she said, "We just cannot fit anymore on this property here," which is one of the reasons why we went with the larger species of trees. We went with the three and a half inch, obviously have a better survivability, much larger at planting. So we added, it was actually, it was over 4,000, so we're about 13% right now more. And at the suggestion of the planning commission, we were thinking we wouldn't plant around the out parcels. Obviously, trees, you put a tree, it's guaranteed to be in the wrong place. But that was where we added a lot of the trees, was around the outlots to improve the landscaping around there. And if we have to move trees later on, because the driveway's in the way, fine, we could certainly move that. And then the setbacks. Originally, we did have driveways internal to our property. But then that restricts what the developer can do, because there's a limited number of driveways on the roadways. So the three-foot, you know, getting the deviation for that three-foot setback is really only related to the shared driveways that are basically designed for the overall development and to limit the number of driveways on Paps Farm Boulevard. Everywhere else, if you look at the plan, once you get beyond the shared driveways, we have more than, well, more than the three-feet setback there. We have exceeded it, because we want to get the landscape planting. If you look at the landscape plan, we have a lot of information, a lot of planting around the perimeter of the property, particularly along 94 and then on the east and west sides of the property there. And then just as far as the timing goes, for the gas station, I apologize, that was put into the narrative as a anticipated hours. It wasn't thought that that would get put into the conditional use permit. So it was never put there and then say, "Okay, now we're going to come back for more hours." So it was just part of the discussion with Jason that, you know, hey, they have gone to a 10:00 p.m. Our data was not updated that we put into our initial narrative when we presented the project. So we came back and said, "Well, just to be consistent with national, you know, can we go to 10:00 o'clock on the Monday to Friday?" So I just wanted to also explain that part of it there. And I guess now I've said all of that, I've forgotten the original comment.
It's about the parking. How confident are you? Are you going to have that parking's going to be utilized? That we're not going to end up with this massive, you know, blighted parking lot that's not, you know, largely being used?
Yes, no.
Like Kmart.
No, we, this is the trend that we're going with. We're going up to about 925 stalls, somewhere around there. So we're still under where we would like to be, because we've done, we do parking utilization studies all over the place. We're at 750 stalls now. We're at the maximum of those places. We are actively looking for new properties, one to two acres around the warehouses, to add another 150 spaces or so. So this is definitely something we are seeing. So what we're trying to do is get ahead of it on these new stores, which are obviously slightly bigger. They just keep getting a little bit bigger each time, that we want to make sure that we're not landlocking ourselves, which is why we have the additional out parcels. So if we do need to add another 100 spaces, we could do that. Or if we realize that, hey, this is built out to the maximum that we need, then we could start to release those out parcels for sale. So this is definitely a business plan that we certainly don't want to invest millions of dollars in a parking lot that doesn't get utilized. So it is something that we value for our members to have safe access. Typically, your parking utilization, you only want to have is about 85% to 90%. You know, you never want to be at 100%, because then it means people are driving around looking for parking spaces and waiting and clogging up drive hours. So you're really, looking at about 85% of that is really what you want to see as your maximum parking at any one time. So we feel that this is definitely where we would want to be with the number of spaces. That we don't believe we're overparked at that point.
Can I just ask one more thing? What surface is it going, are those outlets going to be then? Are those going to be like a type of concrete or something, or what will those surfaces?
In the future?
Well, just as, I mean, what is this, what is it represented as currently?
But right now, it just is open space, grass area.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, so it's grass area until we have a plan or use for it, but it'll be maintained.
I bet they could put some big rocks, boulders in it, like others have done.
But it'll be part of the maintenance. Obviously, we will maintain it as...
Okay, no, just, I'll just clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Rusty?
For the record, I think Costco's a great project and would love to see Costco in Economowalk.
For the record, I, I think Costco's a great project and would love to see Costco in Oconomowoc. And right now, the project does fit. If you take a look at all of the yellow, everything without the outlots fits without needing a PD overlay. This PD overlay is simply for the outlots. We can approve more parking, the Planning Commission, and can approve more parking their own. I mean, I think Mr. Gallo can do that without us. The setbacks can be approved without us. So the, the overlay is 100% for the outlots. And the project fits as written right here without the overlay. So I, I think it does work. They just want the outlots to be able to be developed in the future, and I'm just not for that.
Well, it brings the project, like I say, into compliance with generally, when you do have stormwater management on-site, then our projects are at 75%. I mean, that's, that's certainly, so it's not necessary just because we're, we're trying to gain the out parcels for development. It's really for the value of the land and what, what this was envisioned for this particular parcel. And, and the way that this whole, as Jason mentioned, this whole area was developed with a regional facility. So it's not just for what we're looking at, just say, hey, we want to jam some more impervious in there. I mean, this is the value of the land, being able to develop it and keeping with the master plan here.
Any other comments?
Just very briefly, I live in the area. I'm, I literally could probably walk out my back door and look at the Costco. I've heard nothing but positive things from the folks that live in my area. I do think it's a, it's a special project, it's a good project for the taxpayers. I, I've heard numbers floating around between 40 and 50% of citizens in Oconomowoc are already members of Costco. Already members of Costco. Costco's not even here yet. I don't know what else you would expect to get put along the corner of 94 and Onlet Ramp. I just, I don't see what else is ever going to go there. So I, I think this is the right project. But Karen, I'm curious about your vote. You voted against the zoning several weeks ago. You voted for the CUP.
I did.
Now you're going to vote against the PD.
Yes, so I voted against the zoning. I voted for the CUP because they met those standards. I couldn't vote against the CUP. They did meet the standards of the CUP, but I voted against the zoning.
And so you're against the entire project? Because that, because you think the PD is too, too much of a, of a give?
Are we supposed to be...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think this is...
Just curious, I'm just, yeah, well, you can answer it. Don't answer the question then, you don't have to answer it.
Okay, I just feel like I didn't want it zoned outside of business park because I think it's a really, it could be a really special project there with some type of business park. And from the people that I heard from, it's like parking and lighting and traffic. And so, you know, everybody thinks that everybody in Oconomowoc is for this. Not everybody's for this, you know? I know a lot of people are, and I'm a Costco member. But like I said, I'm giving a voice to people that had concerns and didn't want it there, so.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Costco can still go in there, they can still develop without the PD overlay. Like it's, it's approved, they're ready to go without the PD overlay, and it fits.
Yes. So if I, if I can just add, I mean, I don't want to be an alarmist or anything, but clearly, have, not having the ability to develop in the future three valuable out parcels is a big decision that would have to be made then as part of an economic decision for the project. And, and just to point out, there are 17,000 members, households in Oconomowoc who are Costco members.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kevin?
So way back in the 90s, I believe, we had a large company come into Oconomowoc. It's called Target, over a million square feet. You'd think there was a lot of people in here at that time saying, it's not going to work, it's not going to work, it's not going to work. And here we are now. Now we're talking about a Costco, which is only 161,000 square feet. I, when I was in planning, a week ago, I was hell-bent on trying to go to 24/7 because I know at some point in time, they're going to want to go ahead and go from 10 to 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock. And before you know it, they want to go ahead and go around the clock. But I don't want to die on that hill. I can tell you that I am for the project. I think that it's something that would make Oconomowoc stand out. I believe that they are going to do the right thing on so many levels. And I really do think that it's something that, at the end of the day, we're going to be very proud of. But just, my point here is, this is going to work. I really feel it's going to work.
And a, and a kudos to Costco from a simple standpoint. From Plan Commission, we talked about a lot of these things. We also had a strong discussion because of the landscaping. And they responded above and beyond what we expected. And they did it very quickly, and they did that directly with Jason. So I think they want to be here. I think the majority of the community wants to be here, have them here. And I think it'll be an incredible economic boom to that whole corridor. And again, you guys, this is on the interstate. This isn't in the middle of the city or in a community. This is in a spot, and it has some set hours. And the PD, PD overlay puts restrictions on them. So when you said, yes, you can do this without, I would rather have the restrictions so as things change, they have to come back to council, they have to come back to Plan Commission. So I think, my two senses that I think this is really, really good for the community, and I look forward to your vote. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I have one last comment.
Sure. Go ahead.
The gentleman from Costco did mention that it would be economically unviable without the outlots, which you're not going to make tons of money off of having additional parking. So it does insinuate that you are planning to sell them for development. So I, I would prefer just total transparency versus saying, hey, we would like to hold these for parking because if we don't, it's not, not economically viable for us to choose this spot.
If I could just clarify, just sorry, my, my point there, I didn't say it's economically unviable. I just said it would be an economic decision that has to be made for the purchase if there's significant millions of dollars of land that is unbuildable essentially. And so if you look around the country at other Costcos, I mean, this is what we do, is we buy land where we can, because not all of them, if we only get 60, 18, 19 acres, I mean, that's it. It's a Costco and nothing else, like one in Utah that I'm just about to start next week. It's 18 acres and there's no out parcels. Where we can in instances like this, we just want to have some flexibility there. So I can't tell you whether there would be added parking or outlots. Right now, we're just about to close on some land in northwest Omaha. Same thing, 36 acres there, we're just about to close on some land there. Little Rock, Arkansas. We closed on, I think, three or four of the out parcels there for some restaurants and things like that. So that, that plan then was to hold on to it and not, you know, know at the time what we want to do. But as we find that we have enough parking or whatever, then, then we'll start to release those lots. So I, I'm not trying to do bait and switch or anything, I'm just giving you the facts of the way that we operate. And having the land gives us the flexibility to, to kind of control our own destiny. We've got plenty of situations where we are landlocked. And we're having to buy buildings, tear buildings down in Bowling Brook, Illinois. We just bought an Obwayce Dairy building there. And we're going to tear the building down and add 110 parking spaces there. I think we're at 780 or something there right now.
And with all due respect, I, I think the, the citizens of Oconomowoc don't really want to be compared to Omaha or Little Rock. We're Oconomowoc, and we, we want to keep our city special in a small-town feel. So I, I, I want you to understand why I'm arguing this.
Yeah, I'm just giving you the example of how we do our business model, that's, that's it. But we certainly want to be here, we'd love to be here. We appreciate the staff and elected officials, and everybody's been fabulously welcoming. So, you know, we certainly, you know, want to be in, in Oconomowoc. It's a great location, it's a great place to be.
Motion to approve waiving second reading.
Second.
Any further questions or comments?
Can we put the motion through but having a second reading?
Motion has been made to waive the second reading, and that's on there, and it's already been second. So I'd like to know if you have any comments or questions at this time? So we have to vote on this first.
What would the process be for...
Motion to amend.
I'd like to motion to amend keeping the second reading.
And can you define why?
Why do you want to keep a second reading?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot has been said, and it would be good to hear from the people that we keep saying we don't hear from. What's one, what's two more weeks to make sure that...
If there's a second, then you put on...
So do I have a second? You're seconded?
Yeah.
And then we call votes. So what you're voting on is to amend the initial motion to not waive the second reading. So we have a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
No.
Alderman McConnell.
To not waive this motion, to not waive the second. Yay.
Alderman Youngworth.
Nay.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
So that does not pass, so we go back to our original motion that has been second. Any further questions or comments?
Just real quick, I think the heart of that was good, but this is like, what, our third, second or third meeting in regards to Costco, and no one's shown up. So at this point, no one's coming to say that they don't want Costco. But again, I get the heart of what you were doing there.
Yeah, and I, I would echo that.
Yeah.
It's a good, good approach and good thoughtful comment. Any further questions on the, on the current motion on the floor? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Nay.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Okay, so that moves forward, thank you very much. We'll move on to our next Plan Commission item.
Common Council.
Common Council item.
Plan Commission item.
Well, it's a common council item from the Plan.
Do you want to read the agenda? It's right there. Consider act on the certified survey map from the Plan Commission to divide property in, from, into two lots, from two outlots located within Old Highlander Development north of Papp's Farm and south of the Rubric Rain, formerly the Ski Hill. This was viewed as a Plan Commission item, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly is.
Okay.
To the, to the common council.
Correct.
So staff did receive a certified survey map to divide properties at the Ski Hill, known as the Ski Hill, and it has the old Ski Chalet building on it that is being sold potentially to a developer to fix that up. They would like to divide this into a couple of lots for development purposes and for the sale, as well as two outlots. They're going to, they show the dedication of Snyder Way on here. And a road dedication actually naturally divides a lot, so this became an outlot. You can only put, fit four lots or a combination of lots and outlots on a certified survey map. So they are going to be coming back to re-divide Lot 2 at, potentially in, in August because it's going to Plan Commission in early August. But this certified survey map just basically divides this lot off and this remaining area up here. And then it creates two outlots. So the Plan Commission did review this, and they recommended in, in favor of it.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gallo? Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman's...
Go ahead.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason. We'll move on to staff reports from our city administrator, Mr. Frye.
I just really have one or one and a half. I wanted to welcome Steve to the City of Oconomowoc. This is his first week, so, well, he started on the 8th, so he's been here just a little bit over a week. He's doing very well. I also want to thank Hannah. Hannah has really stepped up. In addition to her regular job, she took on the things that Lori would have done with all the capital and everything. And Steve's been part of the process, but, you know, once again, he's just walking in, just been here seven days now. So I, I do want to thank both of them for everything that they've done.
Any questions or any comments from the aldermen today? Alderman Rosick?
I have just a couple. One, a couple of us attended the Western Lakes Fire District retirements tonight. I think there were six total, including a personal friend of mine, Tom Schutz, who is the former assistant chief. It was a great ceremony, a lot of people showed up, it was very cool. It's, it's nice to see our community out supporting Western Lakes. Next, Park and Rec, we, we got a, we, we had some dispute this week about everything going on at City Beach. Mark and I had actually had a discussion last week, and it was on my notes to say tonight, I'd like our Park and Rec Board to look into the City Beach. Mark put out the memo today already before, so he kind of beat me to the punch. But I was going to recommend tonight that we have our Park and Rec Board look into holistically the entire Villa, City Beach area. The bands, the sand line, the park space, the kayak rentals, the, the lifeguards, the swimming lessons. There's a lot of different communities doing different things, and I think it's important for them to not only look at what we're doing, what we could do differently, and also where things have gone wrong. I mean, some communities like Pewalki don't have beach bans. And they have roaming bans of kids that cause fights on the beach. They don't have lifeguards. I mean, so there's things that we can look at, but I, I, I think we're doing a good job, but I think it's good for us to do the holistic approach. The other thing, we had a discussion during Committee of the Whole about one of the aldermen not being able to maybe make a meeting because we, we did a, a meeting change for the police fundraiser. I think instead of complaining, what we should try to do is maybe come up with a solution. To me, that solution was maybe B is we try to meet earlier on Tuesday. We had it set, I think, for 6:00. So last year, I think we got through the capital budget in an hour, hour and a half.
It was two and a half hours.
Was it?
6:00 to 8:30.
Oh, was it the, the schedule? So here's, here's my solution, so that we can get all people involved is, let's see if we can move that meeting a little earlier on that next Tuesday, do it like 4:00, 4:30. If we don't get through it all, we still have Thursday as the backup to finish it. And then for the aldermen that can't make it because of other plans and the other changing things, we can address any other concerns on that last meeting on Thursday. So that's what I would like us to do, if we could start early, if we can do it.
Can we do that, Mark?
What?
So we had Tuesday and Thursday earmarked.
Yep.
Is Wednesday an option? I can send out an email to everybody and see if there's something.
Wednesday's not for me and not for Mulder.
Okay.
But, I mean, it, let's see, I, maybe it doesn't work, but my suggestion...
I think it's kind of a neat idea. Is there a reason, because it affects a lot of people's schedules, is there a reason we could start at like 4:00?
Yeah, I...
Or 3:00?
Not 3:00, I don't think we can do that.
But 12:30? Yeah, no, I mean, well, here's, if we get through...
Or there's Monday.
Look, the last, the last capital budget only took us an hour to get through. We weren't here that long.
No, I appreciate your offering to come up with a solution. Mark just said Monday?
Monday would work for me.
I've got a meeting at 3:30 on Monday, the 21st.
So if we did Monday at 6:00?
Monday works for me.
Is there anybody that could not make it on Monday 6:00? I better look.
The 21st.
Not needed.
Yes, I am. I feel that way all the time. Yeah, I can make it.
I could do Monday, too.
Is there anyone that can't? Because what we don't want to do is because one person can't make it, we also don't want to end up with two people not making it or another person not being able to...
Mark, can you send out an email tomorrow so that we can all check our calendars?
I want to check my calendar, I'm not going to say anything until I check.
And then we'll all respond to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing, and thank you for this suggestion, what I'm hearing is potentially Monday at 6:00, next week, Monday at 6:00. That also means please download all that stuff that Hannah and the, and the team put together. Really look at it so that we can all come as prepared as possible.
We got to look at this stuff ahead of time?
Oh, wait, what?
And... Paz, you had a comment?
Yeah, just picking off of, piggybacking off of Alderman Rosick's comments, I think we're really lucky to have lifeguards in this community.
Oh, yeah.
Really, I want to thank them for being willing to serve. A lot of communities don't have that.
A lot of communities don't have that. They're young kids, they're having to put in a lot of time to train to do that. So, you know, I appreciate them. I appreciate our police department also serving our community and having good people who are willing to be a part of it and step up and engage and keep our visitors and our residents safe. And if individuals have, you know, issues with how things run, they shouldn't be the people, the police officers and lifeguards shouldn't be the people catching the grief. You know, you should come here to us and make your complaint and not, you know, have a fight on the spot. So that's what I encourage residents and visitors to do in the future and look forward to, you know, having the discussion that Alderman Rosick said that would happen at the park and rec. And just thanks again to the police and lifeguards for serving our community.
Alderman Ellis.
Yeah, I just want to mention the July 4th and our 150th. I thought that was outstanding. I was so proud of Oconomowoc on those two days. And being part of it was just, I don't even know how to put it into words. For those that have served, I thank you for your service. Absolutely, I salute you.
Alderman Mulder.
Yeah, this is just something I'd like us to be thinking about. I sent a note out a week ago or so about the presence of ATVs and UTVs in the community now that our surrounding areas all have that. And I've seen them parked outside the Beer Garden on Friday night. So it's not just coming in to get gas. They clearly feel that our city streets are now part of their trails. I don't, I'm against it. I think people that operate those don't operate them like it's a car. They operate it like they're going out for fun, which they are, which means they probably shouldn't just be in our downtown, at least without us approving it, thinking about it.